I can see Nancy. Can you hear me Nancy? Can you hear me Scott on the computer? You can hear me, okay. Lindsay, can you hear me? No, you can't.
Yeah, I can hear you Dave.
I can't hear you. Okay, because I'm not hearing anything from the council chambers, are you?
No, I think everything's muted right now or something.
Okay. Now I can.
I can't.
No, I can't hear you Scott, I can hear Lindsay.
We're built for pandemic.
Here we go, here you go, I can hear you now.
I can hear you now.
I will try. Yes, your mute is over here. That's your volume, just turn your volume down then. Test, test, test. This is a new one.
Bianca's giving a thumbs up.
Bianca, we're good? Okay. Yes.
Welcome to the August 17th, 2020 regular meeting, both in person and online of the Oakmont Borough Council. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance is to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit. Wrong call please.
Mr. Brinkley.
Here.
Ms. Del Rosso. Ms. Ficaros.
Here.
Ms. Osterhaugh.
Here.
Ms. Powers. Ms. Ride. And Borough Council President Friday.
Here. This evening, we have one registered speaker. Please come to the X in the middle of the floor, state your name and address.
Well, hi everyone, I'm Jill Weeks and I live at 805 Ninth Street. And I wanted to talk about the civil defense sirens that are used in our town. I know that's a well-worn issue, but before you roll your eyes and tell me this is just the way things are done here, I would like to hear, have you hear me out. First, starting with the video, I've lived here for eight years, so I raised two newborns here next to the siren, and now I have two toddlers next to the siren. And I just wanted to give you a framework to think about the problem, and that is that it's a public health issue. So. Okay, thank you for watching. I wanted to show you some siren outside our house, which is 95, 95. The siren has 115 vehicles. What's considered healthy for kids is something less than 85 vehicles. Behind our house, we live between the Fifth Street Siren and the 10th Street Siren. So they create something called constructive interference, where the sound waves collide and it makes the sound even louder. So when I talk about the siren, I think about it as a civil defense alert system. So if there was a tornado or an active shooter, we'd have both. The siren can be used for that, and it's when we know to go down to our basements, because the world is collapsing and requires action on the part of the citizen. The effects of these long-term sirens, they're used for all the calls that are made to the fire department. And I do realize that coming here and talking about the fire department and being any way critical of them can make me sound like you're anti-American, and that is definitely not the case. I think one of the best ways to show your patriotism is to help, is to help our, our forces and serve them with what is the appropriate tool. The defense goes off for all the calls that are made there. So for us to actually do something, we wouldn't even know the first steps of doing that because it goes off so frequently and applying that caution to the T. I'm sure many of you are hearing that language now because we're all wearing masks and we're all getting tired of staying at home all the time. But the reality is that public health, no one gets excited about public health. I am a registered dietitian by training, so I get to talk to kids about eating fruits and vegetables, and I can get them excited, I'm very good at getting kids excited. And I'm getting, I'm still going to get people excited about things, but I actually brought some of my neighbors here today that are also in very close proximity to the siren. So trust me, it's not just an issue that I've thought about for eight years, but that many of us who have purchased houses in the area did not know. We had a siren until it went off, but our kids freaked, they hollered out and continued to freak out. So the thing with public health is that there are side effects to the way that you put something into place. So with a policy or with a service, like when you need a fire department, like thank God we have this amazing volunteer fire department, we're so lucky and so grateful. But there are consequences to the things you put in place. Like for example, when you wear a mask, your face gets itchy and you sweat, but it's worth preventing COVID-19, right? Well, think about the DARE program that we put into place, and we said, well, we'll teach kids all about drugs, and then no one will do drugs. It turns out, teaching kids about drugs in that detail of a way actually increased drug use. So it's a really delicate balance of information and what you're going to do to solve a problem. So I really want us to think about the, the side effects, the unintended consequences of using a siren that was originally intended as a civil dispense siren to go off every once in a while, and now it goes off all the time. And the impact that has when we put it on our school. So why am I here right now? Because I'm home all the dang time, and everybody here is home all the time. Our companies have had to pivot, we've had to become digital, we've had to be resilient, we've had to come up with new ways of doing things. And I think it's, Oakmont is changing. I think the demographic of Oakmont is looking different, and we really want to not hear that saying, this is the way things are done here. So I'm not going up with bolt cutters to take it down. That's not what, the way I want to do it. I want to help and support our police. I did have an awesome meeting with Dave Carroll over the weekend, and I got to see all super awesome trucks and all this technology. And I know, Kerry, you're an awesome grant writer, and there's lots of funding from the state where we could use all of our resources to get them what they need if they don't have it, and think about a better way of doing things. Because we've all been pushed to have to do that during the pandemic, and I would encourage our talent to do the same. So thank you so much for listening in, with this new lens. And I'm sorry if it's, you know, an old shoe or whatever the expression is, but it's very important to me, it's very important for our neighborhood. And it's really affected our kids. I know when Paula moved in, he kept running over when the siren went off, and he said, what should I do? And I said, I have no idea, it just goes off all the time. So it's, it's hard to raise kids in that stressful environment, and I know the school, they have kids out in the playground, and it is so, so loud. So thank you so much for your attention, and thank you guys so much for your service. I don't ever want to undermine what we do here for our public service. This is a great town, thank you so much for listening.
Thank you for your comments. It's the time in the agenda where we receive comments from the public. If there's anyone who'd like to speak, please come to the room, center of the room, state your name, address, and limit your comments to three minutes. No one choosing to come forward? Does the borough manager have any correspondence to submit?
Nothing additional, no.
In your package, you had the council minutes from July 20th. I need a motion to accept those minutes. Ms. Ride made a motion to approve the minutes, is there a second? Mrs. Del Rosso seconded the motion. Any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero. You've had an opportunity to review the August 2nd, or the August 3rd, 2020 work session minutes. Are there any comments? Seeing as there's no comments, the borough manager will take over the discussion items.
First item under appointed boards, the Boulevard Project. Speedway informed me today that they were scheduled to replace the trees at Speedway Station on Holton Road, but then somebody from the borough stopped them from doing what they were doing. I have emailed them saying that no one has, no one besides him, myself, and Joey Anderson have been talking about this project, so the local staff should get names. They are scheduled to do the landscaping as was required by the land development plan, so we're waiting for an answer back on who stopped them. Kerr Museum, I met with Mrs. Shoup this past week briefly. The Kerr Museum is still closed, predominantly because the docents and the volunteers are of age, or COVID-19 is still a threat to them. They're looking, they're following the Parks Recreation and Parks and Recreational Society's guidelines for museums for volunteers. Again, if their demographic changes, we consider opening, but right now, they're not in a position to do so. I don't have the details in front of me, but the county did send out a RAD update to the library director that she sent to Renee, and I think you Nancy, real briefly about, I scanned, it was a calculation change, or at least they're trying to give us an idea. Yeah, I can't either, it was a very long paragraph that told us, that told us nothing. But they're, that they're working on it, yes. And it was following RAD money and the CARES Act. Recreational Board, they will be meeting Wednesday evening as a group to, and their directive is to come up with a document for council to act on regarding the final decision on off-leash policy for Dark Hollow Park and bike. They were going to do it by telephone, I recommended, you know, wait until Wednesday, and then have something that they can have time to prepare and then submit for work session September, and then we would go from there. I'm moving. I talked to Slish about timing and ordinances or how we want to do this, but. If I get something on, if I get something early enough to get, I will get to Kate, and I'll ask them to do that so that we can actually start something in pen for review packet. Under shade tree commission, they did complete their abbreviated plantings project this past week. Brian gave an update to several on council. The Parks Department did assist with offloading the trees in locations, then coming back and filling the water bags. We have a down low science now, so it's helping us to do that. I'm fretting about 90 trees next year, but we'll figure that out when that time comes. No glitches this time with the railroad right of way or anything like that, so. We have some, they're still looking for random trees that were removed and trying to get those wishes fulfilled. I did sign off on about 32 K light vouchers this past week. That was the credit that Brian negotiated with utility company to replace trees that they had removed that helped us get those trees at a greater discount. Administration, Part B, correspondence in your packet, the residents in the vicinity of College Avenue and Elm Way are asking council to consider we install an additional street light at that intersection. The letter gives the reasons for. That's something I will forward to Mike, and we can discuss from council's perspective another time. Under personnel, there is an action item the council has to take action on this evening. Sergeant Eaton is retiring from the Police Department, effective the end of this month. The letter was in your packet, everything is lined up for him and, and on August 30th. Madam, I will need an action item. You can do so now if you'd like. Yes, you can.
Dave, would you like to propose a motion to accept?
I will make a motion to accept the letter of retirement from Sergeant Jack Eaton, effective August 30th, 2020.
Motion has been made to accept a retirement of Sergeant Jack Eaton, effective August 30th, 2020. Is there a second? Ms. Powers gave a second, any discussion? Seeing as there's no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passed zero to seven.
Thank you, council. Item number three, the Plum Creek update. Nothing new since the grant submission has occurred, but I do want to let you know that the watershed group Phase Two project for the gravel bar removal and Brink rehabilitation is moving along with the administrative work. We're finalizing our contracts. Madam President, just signed our paperwork this evening. We'll be forwarding off the banks, and so maybe in the next 30 to 40 days, we actually may see contractor mobilize on the property and start working on Plum Creek. I have no additional items since our last council meeting, solicitor?
Thank you. I would just note that coming up in the agenda is a resolution that I drafted regarding the amusement device tax license fees. I'm a mouthful, but just based on conversations with council, waiving the collection of those fees because those businesses that have those machines were hard hit during the forced closures and pandemic. Nothing additional to report, but happy to answer any questions.
We can move on to letter item C, and Nancy, finance?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the warrant list for July 2020 in the amount of $464,725.47.
Ms. Ride has proposed a motion to approve the warrant list for July 2020 in the amount of $464,725.47. Is there a second?
I'll say aye.
Ms. Ficaros, second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those passed? The motion passes seven to zero.
The second item has to do with the agreement that the borough makes with respect to the police pension plan. And we met with the, I forgot my name of firm, representative.
Mark Hop.
Thank you.
Mark Hop, yes.
The representatives from Mark Hop, and they went through their whole process, and David and Scott and I sat with them, and we did it virtually. And the amount shown in the resolution are for January, this is for the 2021 budget. And you'll notice we're making a correction to the version you're reading. In the third paragraph down is the minimum municipal obligation for the 2021 budget. These amounts are similar to the ones that are being paid for 2020. The police is about $17,000 less, and then the general employee part is a little higher. One thing that will come into play is we get funds from the state, we get state aid that will reduce these amounts somewhat, so we get a reimbursement amount from the, from the state. So that's what this resolution, we're required to do this in this year in anticipation of including it in our budget for next year. And just make a motion, and then if there's more questions, we can try and field them for you. I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number R17 of 2020, the financial requirement and minimum municipal obligation for the Borough of Mont Police Pension Plan and Borough of Mont General Employees Pension Plan.
Ms. Ride has proposed a motion to approve resolution number R17 of 2020, the financial requirement and minimum municipal obligation for the Borough of Mont Police Pension Plan and the Borough of Mont General Employees Pension Plan. Is there a second? This is Osterhaugh seconded, is there discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Scott, maybe you can answer this. Is this resolution going to be dealing with the actuarial assumptions in the upcoming actuarial report, or are we just funding the upcoming year's MMO from this? I know that the actuary indicated that council has the right to weigh in and pass the actuarial assumptions. I assume that this resolution is not dealing with that, is that correct?
Correct, this is dealing from the January 1, 2019 actuarial evaluation report. As, as next year will be an odd year, we would expect the report at the beginning of the calendar year that that will reflect the 2022 MO calculation when we do the same thing a year from now. Does that make sense?
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we weren't locking ourselves into actuarial assumptions that aren't already in place for the whole report.
Now, this is year two of that two-year assess, assumption.
Okay.
Any other question? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes seven to zero.
Under respect to what Kate just discussed, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number R18 of 2020, waiving the borough's mechanical amusement device tax license fees for tax year 2020.
Ms. Ride has made a motion to approve resolution number R18 of 2020, waiving the borough's mechanical amusement device tax license fees for tax year 2020. Any questions?
I just want to comment that the budgeted amount for those taxes was $8,000. So it's a relatively modest amount of revenue for us, but it could be burdensome for the small organizations that have these games and stuff.
I would also like to bring to attention that the origin of this idea to defer the amusement tax came from the police chief. And he is the one who administers the collection of these taxes, and it was his feeling that council should consider waiving them. So thank you for that, Chief Ford.
We missed a second for that, so I'll.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Ms. Powers seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
Under D, Community Development, the 1037 Holton Road project did receive a variance request from the zoning hearing board last week. This variance is dealt with adjusting some side yard and front yard setback proposals for the project. This is where the former Macero mansion was located. The, we have not received the official decision nor the transcript, but we do know that the variances were granted. I do expect this project to come to the September Planning Commission meeting. Copies have already been given to, no, we don't have any copies yet, but when they do, we'll give them off right away to the borough engineer and Allegheny County for review. and Allegheny County for review as well as our planning commission. Thank you, Cypress something. Cypress, yes.
How do you spell that?
Y, C, R, E, S, F. Okay, it's great.
There's many people that attend that meeting?
The email didn't indicate, no. I know there are people interested from a investment standpoint, empty nesters, but other than that, nobody, um, I don't know if it was packed house because we, they were seated like this, so.
I think there were five people who attended.
Thank you. I'll just say ask next time if they might use. Sorry. Sorry. Item number two, there are two lot line revisions coming to the planning commission. One is the 12th revision of the river's edge to consolidate a lot for some housing style for one of the views of the river. And another is the McDonnell lot line revision. That's is that five lot parcel on 12th Street behind the cemetery. There was an error in one of the arcs and radiuses of one of the lines and they're adjusting it from this to this, Jay. I think you have a copy of it in your files at the office. That'll be on planning. And lastly, that land development plan revision is the river's edge. Their final land development application, it'll be revised to reflect Phase 12 of the subdivision as well as some additional work along the river. Also to give an update to everything they have done so far and what is left to complete. You ultimately will see it, but ultimately you are invited obviously to come to a planning commission meeting to hear our standard as well. And that'll be the next week, planning commission meeting. Under public safety, I would defer to the police chief for the mayor's report.
As submitted, as given to you, any questions regarding it? The only update I do is we finally have a new car on the road. It went back to port one day later, but they fixed the job. But it is on the road. The civil service process is currently ongoing and they are in the back rooms and photographs currently. We should have some information on that in the next two or three weeks.
I noticed there's 110 for three hour parking, which would be the boulevard.
Correct.
Does that tend to be the same people repetitively or?
I'd have to look, yes, in a lot of instances. It's, uh, is the same. We vary the blocks. We don't always have time to do it, so we try to make it random which blocks we always get.
Are you limited on the lower boulevard if you, or on that? I mean, if, if somebody that runs a business on the boulevard parks on Allegheny River.
The avenue is not an issue. What becomes the major issue is the four, five and 600 blocks. Mainly the 400 and 500 get very congested. So those are hit regularly and, and monitored. But once you go above 4th Street, I had actually career way, you can park just as regular sweeper out hours. So it's a matter of walking a couple of blocks plus from Griffin, Dr. Griffin's old office down to Pennsylvania is open parking on the riverside. That stops right there. So there is parking available for businesses. Frankly, at any given time, you're looking at two to three block block.
Dave? Dave?
Do you want me to handle the fire department stuff then? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application for membership submitted by Anthony G. Siegelson of Edgewood Avenue, Oakmont to join the Oakmont Volunteer Fire Department.
Mr. Brinkley has proposed a motion to accept the application for membership submitted by Anthony G. Siegelson of Edgewood Avenue of one to join the volunteer fire department. Ms. Wright seconded. Is there any discussion?
This is a junior fire officer. Should it specify that in the motion?
I think so.
It can when it takes the O's. This is the, this is part of the bylaws where they have a first reading at the fire department. And then we have an acceptance of the application. And now they'll have a second and third reading of the fire department. At that point in time, when his membership is no longer pending, is when he'll be identified as a junior firefighter at the O.
Is that part of their rules?
It is actually part of the bylaws. Dave and I are beating up each other about procedures, but it does take about three months for an individual to get from application to member regardless of status, whether it be junior or active. And we could, if we, if we did a rejection of the application right now, just the whole process stops.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. The motion passes seven to zero.
I would also like to make a motion to accept the application for membership submitted by Seth Merriman of Riverfront Street, Oakmont to join the Oakmont Volunteer Fire Department.
Mr. Brinkley has proposed a motion to accept the application for membership submitted by Seth Merriman of Riverfront Street, Oakmont to join the Oakmont Volunteer Fire Department. Is there a second?
I'll second.
This is for Kara seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes seven to zero.
Also under item F, Public Works, we will start with the engineer report. Jay?
There was a depression called sinkhole reported down on 3rd Street in front of 415 3rd Street. In the center of the road. And we're talking sanitary sewer, so we thought that it would be televised and it has been televised. And we noted there's water coming in through the joints at that location. The source of water is unknown. We had the water authority check to see if they had a water leak. Doesn't seem to be any water leak. So at this time, we would probably recommend just filling the, the depression in and watching to see if it goes down any longer. There's no opening at all. It's just depression in the roadway. Also on Washington Street, same thing basically. We're talking the sanitary sewer at 126 Washington. Again, we televised, didn't find any damage to the, to the pipes whatsoever. Same recommendation to dispatch and watch. There is no, again, no open at these locations. The sewer line at that location is about 20 feet deep. So, you know, if, if we had found something, we would have, it would have been an extensive project. And right now, I think that we'll just wait, wait out and see if it goes down anymore.
Is that something that Mike would do?
He's already doing it tomorrow. We talked this morning, part of his agenda, he's just going to level it off. At part of their pad hole, pad hole routine, we're going to, you know, literally we're going to watch and see what happens. So.
Thank you.
The sinkhole at, at College and Allegheny River Boulevard protocol has completed that project. And just, I think they just finished it on Friday. They were going to move up to Virginia and Ninth, but unfortunately we've got somewhat of an emergency with the force main up at the Fairways Pump Station, Santers Pump Station. There's a leaky force main inside the wet well. It's, it's not really hindering the, uh, and it's, it's not spilling anything, put it that way. It's spilling back into the wet well, causing the pumps to pump more often. It's something that needs to be addressed immediately because we're afraid it might get worse. So that, that project is going to start. They're going to do some excavation at the wet well at the pump station tomorrow. The parts and things have already been, been brought, we've coordinated with Joe and from sanitary department. And we should do the repair tomorrow night depending upon what we find when we excavate. If we find something that we weren't aware of, it may be Wednesday night. So it's going to be Tuesday or Wednesday. Once that project, we don't expect that project to be more than a day of work. And they'll be back up to Ninth in Virginia and they'll be starting that. So really it started Wednesday or Thursday.
So that work up at the Fairways, where does that come out of?
It's sewage, sewage maintenance.
And it's, it's being done as an emergency protocol was already here and working in the borough. So we approached them and had them come down and look at this. Again, they needed to be repaired immediately.
So tell me again, when do you think you might start at Virginia and Ninth?
Tomorrow during the day, they're going to excavate outside the wet well where we're going to make the new connection. Depending on what we find there, if we find what we think is there, we'll probably do the repair tomorrow night. They'll start sometime around midnight and then do the repair. We want to wait for the flows, for the sewer flows to go down at night naturally. And so that's when we're going to try to do that repair. If we find something that we didn't expect, it may be Wednesday instead of Tuesday night. It shouldn't affect anyone. There, we're going to do bypass pumping with two trucks. So, you know, no one, no one will be affected by, by this whatsoever. You know, they'll just, we'll get the repair done and I don't want to cause a terrible effect on anybody's sewage at all.
The reason I ask the question is there's a bit of a memorial accumulation of interesting artifacts at Ninth at Virginia.
Yes.
That might be treasures that people would want to collect. But I'm sure they'd like them to stay there until it's repaired. So that's why I was asking how soon you might get to Ninth Street.
So they'll be back to Virginia and Ninth either Wednesday, Wednesday morning or Thursday morning.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I'm sure that would be appreciated immensely. Thank you.
All right. Hey, last, last but not least is the wall, town of Allegheny River Boulevard. Right now, they, we, we assessed the wall and we, if the estimate is correct, we do that by sounding the wall, looking for bad concrete. If, if it's correct, we should be able to complete the wall. Now, a- as you see, if you, if anybody's driven by, you can see there's, there's a lot of repair area. Right now, we, we figure we can do 1,700 square feet of wall surface. To date, we've got 925 foot either repaired or ready for repair. We are waiting for material to be delivered. So the finish, that's why you see so much area chipped away, but not, not serviced yet. The tops have been serviced, but the rest don't have. So, um, anyway, they, there's about 85 square feet that they poured and actually changed.
The most guy I say?
On the front face, that's, that doesn't include all the tops.
Okay.
So right now, by contract, they had 60 days to do the whole thing. We virtually doubled the contract in square footage. Because of what we talked about in the last meeting. The bid was bid by an estimate from a contractor and who underbid it basically.
San, San Maria?
No, not, not San Maria. I'm talking about David Contracting who gave us the original quote.
Okay.
Okay. And that, that quote, we use those quantities from that original quote in the bid. And right now, after, you know, doing the sounding on the wall, we're about double that. So I'm assuming that Santa Maria is going to ask for an extension. I don't know if it'll be doubled, but it very well could be. They, they would have a legitimate reason to double the time. If they would double the time, the, the job will be finished by the first of October.
Jay, I have a question.
Yes.
When, when you do any project or you buy any service or you buy a, a product, you have different levels, A, B, C. A being the, just the premier version of anything that you would want. And then there might be a B and C that may not be as excellent, but is adequate. Do you think that the original contractor in his bid, it was, it was accurate in a sense of the standard that he was setting for what the repair could tolerate? And then our contractor is giving us the A product?
I, right now, there are areas in the wall that make it go much further. There's, there's concrete that is, the way this wall is designed, it has small aggregate on the face of the, of the wall and inside has much larger. The stuff on the outside is what's failing.
Okay.
And typically that outside brow is only an inch and a half or two inches thick. And that is what typically fails. This is six inches thick. And it's failing back in that far. So I, I don't think anybody was aware of how bad this facing this wall was. You couldn't see it visually. So without doing a, a complete sounding, which is what we've done.
Yeah.
It, it would have been impossible for him to, to see it now. I think is what he did is the, the original guy looked at the wall, saw the spalls and figured that's what they were looking for. This, this guy that's down there doing it right now, he feels that if he would just do just that, it would fail within a year or so. Okay? And they don't want, he doesn't want to put them on, just, you know, and he doesn't want his work to show that he didn't do a big job also. So, and he is not, he's, because when he's someone who's wanting to get into that larger aggregate, he's strong. And so some of those could be even, even farther, but for what we're doing, we're, we're doing the adequate right now. Okay? To give us the, the A class, we, we would need to have this for. So, so I, I don't, I don't feel either contractor was negligent anyway.
No, I'm, I'm not proposing. I'm not proposing.
But I, I think that's what happened. And then on top of that, that was two years ago. We've, we've gone through some extreme winters with the freeze thaw. And that freeze thaw has really damaged that wall because that wall was old and it allowed a lot of water to get into it. When you have the freeze thaw, it damaged the wall even beyond what it was when they, when they first looked on it.
It was over the period.
It was a WPA project.
No, but hopefully that answers your question.
Yes, it did. Thank you, thank you. What about cost?
For right now, that 1,700 square feet is the, what you have for the grant.
It is.
Yes, that's a, a grand, a hundred seventy-nine. And that 1,700 square feet is what we can do for that money. Now that's, we're going to clean the entire wall, whether we finish the fixing of the wall, we're going to clean the entire wall, paint the entire wall. But the, the area that they are, are doing, we have 1,700 square feet. Now after the sounding, we should be right on the edge. You know, so if they find some extra, we may not hit the hole into the end of it, but it's going to be close.
Any else, Jay?
Nope, that's, that's it.
Well, he took most of my thunder Friday, number two, but I'm going to do a next door Oakmont posting tonight that let residents know in the fifth, excuse me, Ninth Street and Virginia Avenue area, if they want to get their gnomes or Christmas tree back, that they could. And if anybody has access to a social media page locally, that they could do the same thing and maybe let the people know that they could do that as well. We'd appreciate that.
Yeah, that was one of the questions. The contractor had what to do with it.
If anything's there, they should put them off to the side, but I think we just gave enough notice for people to take their gnomes back. There's your story. Those, because they wrote a story about it. The next two items are action items to ratify decisions that I made in the interim of our last meeting to, in order to keep protocol moving on our two sinkholes. First one, I'd be looking for a motion to ratify my decision to award the College Avenue Allegheny River Boulevard Sinkhole Project to Protocol LLC in the amount of $17,000 even.
Ms. Del Rosso made the motion to ratify the borough manager's decision to award the College Avenue Allegheny River Boulevard Sinkhole Repair, the project to Protocol LLC in the amount of $17,000. Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Brinkley seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. The motion passes seven to zero.
Good, Carrie.
I made a motion to ratify the borough manager's decision to award the Virginia Avenue Ninth Street Sinkhole Repair Project to Protocol LLC in the amount of $13,155.40.
Mr. Russell has made a motion to ratify the borough manager's decision to award the Virginia Avenue Ninth Street Sinkhole Repair Project to Protocol LLC in the amount of $13,155.40. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
This is what Carrie's seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. The motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Under item G, Recreation in Parks, I have a resolution that councils to consider. Leah, if you wanted to.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 19 of 2020 to adopt the Verona Oakmont Penhills Plum Trail feasibility study.
Ms. Powers has provided us with a motion to approve Resolution Number 19 of 2020 to adopt the Verona Oakmont Penhills Plum Trail feasibility second study. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Russell seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. The motion passes seven to zero.
Back to you, Madam President.
Um, we, this evening, recognized the retirement of one of our longstanding officers, Sergeant Eaton. And I, we're hoping that when he's invited to come to Borough Council for us to be able to thank him in person, we'll be able to honor his longstanding service. The other thing I wanted to say is the comprehensive plan that we have currently was adopted in The process and the document were mandated by the Municipal's Planning Code. And basically, it's a tool for the community to effectively realize our own best vision for our future. The code requires that the plan be reviewed every 10 years. The Planning Commission is beginning to do that review process and assessing the comprehensive plan. Part of the process includes conducting a review of these past 10 years. And I would like to propose that council approve the creation of a publication to be included in the community newsletter to inform the citizens of the status of the plan. And this would go out in the mail in 2021. It would require some effort on the part of the Planning Commission and our administrative office to create a review of what's been accomplished in this past 10 years. And there may be some expense if we need to add another piece of paper to the community newsletter. But I think that that's valuable information that would be worthwhile for the community to have. So I ask for your support for that idea. Anybody have any thing to add to that?
It's a good idea. I could rather, but it's something that's hard to, people, people pride of. And unless you've been involved with it, you may not even notice it. And I think it's good to see what has been accomplished.
Good. I agree with you. Vice President Leah Powers?
Yeah, so I just want to address the comments by Ms. Lee about the bike siren. This week reached out to me, I don't know, a week or so ago to talk about this. And it's not the first time that I've heard complaints from the community. And I think what, as new people move into town, so people who have not lived here all their lives, people maybe who haven't lived in a community where they use a siren, it is a surprising sort of shocking thing. And certainly, it's a surprise when you buy a home. I think it's helpful to hear new perspectives, to get new perspectives on this issue. And if for nothing else than to take a minute to sort of reflect, to assess, to reevaluate. And so what I'd like for us to do as a council is just to take a look at that, the use of that siren, and to gather some data. So I was going to ask Scott, but since Dave you're here, I'll address you directly. I think I would like to, and maybe you keep these things already, but I would like to ask you on the number of times that siren goes off and for what purpose. So what sorts of emergencies are they called for? How frequently maybe are they false alarms? How frequently, just how frequently the date to the times this siren goes off? And, and then what I'd like to also gather, because I know that this is sort of the person where you live in Oakmont, right? I, I live in a location where I don't really, when my windows are closed, I don't hear it. So I don't think much about it, but I know that there are people who live within a proximity that it's very concerning for them. And even my parents were looking for a home in Oakmont, and I discouraged them from looking within a certain radius of the school because of that siren. So I think understanding how the community feels, and I know there are some residents absolutely who are in suburban. And so how many complaints do you get? What are the complaints? Are they from different people to same people? So you took a log of those sorts of things.
Are you asking?
Yes, yes, sorry.
Yeah, so let me address a couple of things. So first off, I did meet with Jill and a few of the other neighbors. These type of questions come up probably just about every month. And it is from folks that maybe have moved in from another borough or not necessarily born and raised in Oakmont, haven't grown up with that siren, just like to train more across the street.
Excuse me, Dave. I know it's very uncomfortable, but thank you.
Yeah, all right. Be here. I can talk while I'm up anyway.
We can hear.
Yeah, they're great questions. And we, we talk with Jill and anybody that has concerns, I always explore those as options to educate the citizens around why we use those and why it's a necessary sound. And twofold. So first and foremost, we respond to about 200 and, about 220 calls a year. And in the fire business, there's no real false alarm. Every time that whistle goes off or anytime we respond to a call, somebody's in trouble or somebody's property is in peril. So we take that very serious. And as I explained, explained to Jill and I explained to everybody that asked about the fire siren, in the fire service, redundancy is very popular. Hence why we have two engines. We're looking to displace the one, we get a new ladder truck, that will be another decision, and council will, will take that on, I'm sure. But we're not tethered to our devices 24/7. So we have, the comment came up the other day that it would be nice for us to get into the 20th, 21st century. We're way behind. We get text notifications from county, we subscribe to a service called Active 911, which is an intuitive service for us where I can see all my guys. I know we have monitors in the station. We did show Jill and her team that came down, the technology that we use. But there are times when we don't have these things. And I, for one, would never make a decision as fire chief to take away our fire sirens. I would not be that guy that said, hey, we didn't get a response to an emergency and somebody died because they didn't hear the whistle. So if council wants to take that on, God love it, because I feel this is a fire decision and a fire choice from the standpoint of making sure that we're responding when we need to. But I'm happy to supply any data. And primarily, it is, it's some of the newer folks that come into town that aren't attuned to that. We did talk, talk to Jill. Right now, actually, our fire siren has been down on Fifth Street. So if you guys haven't heard it, that's one. And that was a new expense as, I think, three years ago, four years ago. These things are very important, not only to warn citizens if there is an event in town. They don't tell you what it is, but if the fire siren blows three consecutive times, which is almost 12 minutes, and it doesn't stop, that we as citizens need to consult with the radio, the TV or something because something's happening or close to happening in town that is bad. So we never want to get rid of those. Now, how we manage that in the fire service? We've already taken the 1205, for those that are in town that know that we used to be able to say clock every Saturday. So we don't do that anymore because we're tired of hearing those sirens too, trust me. My guys get fatigue and so do I. When this goes off, siren goes off, pagers, minners, we've got a lot of activity going on at that particular time. But they're unnecessary. The older sirens that we do have, the one is located up on 10th Street, and that is back from, you know, if you need to see what they look like, there's a couple of the shells left over by our dumpster in the back. They almost look like rockets, you know? I mean, they're very big and we can't get parts for them. So when the one on Fifth Street went on top of the fire station, we had to replace it. And we bought one that was adequate, but even that was with installation about $9,000.
They probably just hold this anyway.
I have no, yeah, yeah. But when we, when we have these things that come out as far as the parts, you know, we just can't get them. So when the one at 10th Street fails, and the one, and really, I think you guys talked about it down in Ann Street, if you're looking on that cell phone timer, you'll, you'll miss it because back when we installed it, we used our ladder truck. Well, now they have fencing in there, but it's the same model as the one that's at 10th Street. So we did look at cost a while ago to try and replace what we have. And cost installation, and then you also have to have them programmed, right? So it's about $12,000 a piece to do that. So, you know, at some point in time, would love to be able to have the option to replace the two. And we're probably going to have to replace the one on top of the fire station too, pretty soon, because it's non-repairable. So I hope I answered your questions around that. I mean, I'm happy to answer any more, but again, I look at this as a redundancy for the firefighters and as fire chief, I don't want them building away. Now, if council wants to a lot more money and, you know, and put a team together to find an alternative for us, then we're always absolutely would, we're, and as I explained to Jill and as I explained to everybody, we're always about trying to serve and protect and please the residents of Oakmont, so.
Dave, I have a question.
Yeah.
When, when there is a fundraiser, it's usually a general fundraiser. Have you ever considered perhaps naming a fundraiser that would be to replace the siren? You don't have to answer that, just planting the seed. And the other thing is, do we get certain amount of money every year that we then give to the fire company that's, I don't know, 30-some thousand dollars or something like that? Can, is borough, is council in a position to be able to designate how we would like that, or does it go someplace predetermined?
Okay, so to answer your first question, we've, we've thought about naming the fundraiser, but again, the way we use our, our S corp, our charitable or C corp money is for the money that we don't get from the state, the local or FEMA as far as grants, and then the gaps that I need to fill from what the borough can't fund on major, minor expenditures. So that's where that money goes. And it's not a lot. I mean, we, we, maybe 32,000, because don't think you've got everybody from the library to the tree division, you know, everybody's got it, and we're blessed that we get what we get from the town. As far as...
How much do you get from the...
It varies, like 30, 31,000, it all varies on occasion. Every year it's different. There's been low years and there've been years where, but again, those fill the gaps that we can't get, state, federal money or local from the borough.
They, 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 they're going to review the, a shortfall in that next year with stuff?
Probably. Yeah, just like with everything too, Carrie. You're absolutely right. But the money you're talking about is the relief association.
Yes.
And that's very strict as far as how you can spend that. They've opened up those rules. But again, that also is one of those gaps that we look at as far as like, I don't even know if it can be used for fire sirens.
It cannot. That lots of it now cannot.
Yeah, Craig writes our grants and helps me. Craig gave them, everybody. So, so it can't be used for that.
Yes, if the information is accurate, that the decibels need to be lower than 85, is there any way to turn it down or muffle it?
I don't believe so. And again, Madam President, you're talking about something that is 30, 40 years old.
At, at 100 feet, the siren on High School, or 10th Street School, is about 102 decibels at 100 feet.
I'm sorry, could you talk a little louder, please?
Oh, come on. The siren on 10th Street is about 102 decibels at 100 feet. And the siren we have here at the station is about 95 at 100 feet. So we're looking at about 710 decibel difference.
So again, if council wants, they can maybe have one of the engineering groups or somebody, if you guys want to take on that expense to find out all the decimal levels, because there's obviously different ways to measure the decibels, right?
Right, well, what would you do if you didn't have sirens?
Excuse me, you don't have a floor. I'm sorry.
Yeah. So if you guys want to take that on, I have no idea what they bring, what they don't bring, how loud. I know they're, they're loud, and I'm sure they are intrusive. And I always suggest to folks that it does wake up, that we're out there at 3, 4 o'clock in the morning.
Boy, we totally understand that.
You know, and, and, and that's the good news. Sometimes those folks can go back to bed or not. So I would never recommend having that device as a warning or a redundant warning for us to go away.
Mr. Russell, can I ask you a question? Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Craig, 724 Leveaux Street.
Thank you. I understand you're the grant writer. Would it be possible for you to investigate the opportunities out there for a grant for this particular topic?
Yes, the, the two grants that we usually participate in are FEMA and the state. And FEMA's grants are usually, they're called assistance to firefighter grants, and there's a specific scope that goes in there, the, they will go more funds. The state grant is, is pretty much whatever you want to get. It usually caps out around $14,000. And our state grants are, they're already earmarked going forward. Like this year, we did a, you know, because of Oakmont in particular, down with the, with the flooding and whatnot. So this year's state grant was a program to have a supplemental system for helping out basements or water hazards. So we got new, a new trailer, which everybody probably saw. We got new pumps, trash pumps, sludge pumps. We got protective gear for the firefighters. And then moving into next year, we already have several ideas that were earmarked that one. And I think Dave talks about shortfalls, and we do have shortfalls. The two firefighters that got approved today to the eligibility list, they're going to both need gear, and that's going to be about $10,000.
A piece.
Well, no, maybe about $5,000, you said. If that gear goes bad, it doesn't happen in their lifespan. You should replace it properly every 10 years. And we're getting ready to replace, is this a cheap gear because it's, it's at 10 years? It just gets destroyed through the fire shooters.
So we have priorities like council does, when you're marking what culvert gets replaced and when. So we manage our money extremely well, and we have budgets and we have expenses that we know three to five years out what those needs are. And I'll be honest, other than maintaining the fire sirens, to replace them, it's not in my budget.
It's not.
It's, it's not a priority. It's not a life-saving item that I need to protect my firefighters and to protect the community. I understand it's a nuisance, but that's all it is.
At the same time, it, it serves an equally important purpose. You know, we've had fires where our pagers did not clock, and we heard the siren in, in absence of, hey, I think my minuter did go off, my pager did go off, that must be from... that must be Verona's that I'm hearing, or that must be Aspil. You know, my wife would be like, hey, that's your siren. And we're in route to the station, calling, you know, the officers, we carry radios. Hey, say the nature of this call because we have no idea what's going on. If we get a call while we're at home, we have a general idea what we're up against going down the street to the station.
You guys have seen what we have in the station and on our phones and all that, so.
So our last call was on Saturday at 8:30 in the morning for a non-emergency for a boat that sank in the river at wrong. But we have an idea what's, hey, I have a little bit, I can pre-plan when we come down. What resources am I gonna need? What vehicles am I gonna take? Who do I need on this call? But that siren, like I said, it serves an equally important purpose. It's not, you know, people, you always hear people say, that's the way it is. Well, it's the way it is because we need it. It's not the way it is because it's a tradition.
Yeah, we're not willing to take a look at newer technology with sirens, but when that comes to us. So again, if council wants to a lot more towards a budget that I can code and invoice to, would be more than happy to replace those others.
So tell me, going down the road, if it should fail, if it should die, what's the scenario then?
Then budgetary needs that I have for the money for fire sirens and fire maintenance on that coded invoice from you guys would have to be displaced with that. Just like we've done with the boiler over the years, we've had to bring bomb stuff and bomb stuff out of it and, you know, do all that. So just like you guys, we're making priorities, we've got the list, I know what it costs to run the fire department.
So you have to just reprioritize.
We have to reprioritize, yep. Okay.
So my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is that their recommendation is to have two modes of communication.
What's that?
For fire emergencies, you'd have two modes of communication, right? Like a pager and a siren, for example, would be your two modes.
Yes, I have four.
You have four modes.
So we have the siren, we have our smartphones, which we get text messages from county, our chat system. We also have Active 911.
That's on your phone.
That's on our phone. Every member has it on their phone, we have it in every device. And then the officers, you know, we have radios, so.
Okay, but no pagers, like is there?
And we have minuters.
We have minuters.
Yeah, so really, there's four of them, yeah.
Okay.
So we do, yeah, we have pagers to minuters.
So my, you know, the thing with the siren, and I totally get you're on your lawn and you can't hear something else and you hear the siren. My concern with the siren is a backup mode of communication. Now, here's the thing, I want you to have the best possible equipment to fight fires, right? But the best possible equipment that would also be the best quality of life in the community as well, right? And the siren is gonna be really effective if you're standing within proximity of that siren. But I would assume your firefighters leave Oakmont occasionally, and that siren goes off. So if the other things fail and they're in shopping at the waterworks.
They're not coming anyway.
Well, you take it really good. So I was, I was at the grocery store, on my way to the grocery store, and we got a call for a fire. And it was the church fire down here. So my wife was at home, and I was on my way to the store. Well, guess what? She heard the siren, she knows, okay, Craig's on his way to the call. Now I know where he is, and he doesn't come back, she's not calling the chief to say Craig left. Whereas, you know, if I was at the school picking up my son or daughter and the siren goes off, my wife says, well, I should probably get down to the school to get the kids. So it serves multiple purposes.
Good point, Craig, yep.
It's, you know, her people make, well, can you call your wife? Okay, let's pretend that this was your house that's on fire, or your child is trapped. You want me to put all my resources into getting your child out of the second floor? Or do you want me to call my wife and say, hey, yeah, some of these houses on fire on my way there now? So it serves multiple purposes. People said, well, why don't you get, you know, can you put this on your wife's house too? My wife's not a firefighter, right? You know, people said, well, this is what you signed up for. You know why I signed up for it? Because it's a need in this community, nobody else is doing it. Nobody else is knocking over doors. The people that complain, they're not putting in the applications. I'm 50 years old, I'm doing this. It's a mission.
So I can also understand. So in the perfect world, say tonight we turn off all sirens in Oakmont. You know, we're in a valley where everybody uses them, right? So while it may not be disruptive up on 10th Street, what about the folks that live close to Verona, Hilton? Station 224, Penn Hills, Station 285 in Verona. Across the river down in Edgewater, they're hearing a lot of us. You're gonna hear, you're gonna hear the train whistle at night too. It's the way it goes. What are we gonna silence everything? I hope not.
I think this one has sort of a special issue too to kind of look at about this convergence of sound, because the Fifth Street and the 10th Street are pretty close to each other. Is that anything that could be, that the sound could be redirected to some extent so that that wasn't happening?
So Nancy, I don't think so because they were strategically placed throughout the borough for back in the day, the air raid, so that every member of the community knew something that was going on. For us at the fire service, we've got firefighters living all over the world. So, yeah, I've never.
It just seems these are the two closest, aren't they? The 10th Street and the 15th Street.
I mean, Ann Street, 10th Street, I think they're pretty well balanced, actually, I think, so.
I would just like to add to refocus that we are very blessed in this community with volunteer fire department. And I think that's our priority, and we should support the volunteer fires because I know I'm not getting up at 4 o'clock in the morning and writing out the fire. And I think we have to keep that focus as we proceed in offering recommendations we can. But we are very fortunate they have such a strong volunteer fire department in this town.
And again, we're not belligerent, and I'm not fighting this. Please understand, I am open to every and all suggestions, okay? For me in the fire service, that's a very low priority because that doesn't protect lives or save lives. And that's my job as fire chief, to make sure my guys are safe and you guys and the community are safe. And I take that very, very high. So if council or private citizens want to look at donating money or doing a fund drive or GoFundMe, by all means, have at it. They're more than welcome to. And I express that to Jill, anybody that wants to do that. But my priorities and my budgets are set. So I'm not looking to replace those, and I'm not sure whose right of responsibility it is for those fire sirens. I believe it falls under the fire department and the fire chief. But I'm not turning them off. I'm not gonna risk one person's life in this community because of sound. Just not gonna do it, not at all.
So my last question would be, you've used the example of the last call that you had, which was for a boat.
No.
When you received that call, did you know that there was no life in danger?
No.
No.
No, okay.
Because what the call actually stated was that the witness said, no, they didn't believe anybody was in the water. So, you know, we kept calls here in Oakmont, and there, you know, plenty of people have automatic alarms, they have ATR or whatever, and you burn food in your kitchen, it's a smoke alarm, send a signal to us and we're on our way. We had people that say, hey, you know what? If I get proper code, we will be in the fire department here.
We respond to every.
We respond, and we get there, and, you know, there was fire in their wall or, you know, the flames ran it all the way up, you know? So it's like, we gotta go, you know? Do I take someone's word? Because usually they're embarrassed. You know, my house is going, but I'm so embarrassed, the fire department's here. We don't care.
We're always happy when it's not, trust me. If it's just a bad cook, it's just a bad cook.
Our number one goal here is fire prevention. I don't, we don't want to see anybody who is probably your life, we just don't want it. Fire prevention is not the only thing. But, but people aren't honest, you know? And we get there and, you know, we treat everything as, hey, this is a potential life-threatening situation. We need to get there, that's why.
Point to Craig's baby. So they called us off down at Ann Street, and you all know what happened down there. I did not ignore that, we went, it ended up being what it was, so that's what we did. But if you still want some data, I mean, we can pull that off tonight.
I would love that, I would really appreciate it.
Because through the state and through the FEMA, we have to respond to end furs and all that. We've been doing that for years, so that data is a quick push.
We've had 180, so the siren effectively not tested, it's gone off, it was off 485 times. We've had a hundred and fifty odd calls.
So basically, if you look at our average, it's less than once a day. You need that a month.
And there are other ways to get that number now. You know, you could go to the Presbyterian home and say, hey, you guys need to do a better job of your alarm system. You know, they'll do construction and they will cover, they will put dust covers on their fire alarms. There's some alarms, well, that sends a trigger, so plus we're there. You know, our last call, the resident pulled the alarm. You know, down here on Ann Street, we're at home. There's a smoke alarm in the basement next to their laundry system. We've asked them numerous times, hey, you guys need to get this fixed, you got a short here or you're getting a hot signal from your dryer, so whatever, you need to fix that. So as council, you can go after those, those people that are, that are getting our most attention. 645th Street. Probably are not going to call us. Are there any other questions?
Actually, I think it'd be a good idea if you went forward with that information to us so we can get it to our code enforcement.
Yeah.
Agency.
We'll do it.
If that's something that we have the purview over, I think we'd like to follow through.
Especially because we've been getting a lot of calls and had a lot of problems with residents who are upset, and those are the kinds of things we should be focusing on versus the fact that it's a free agency, not to. Is your name?
Yep.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all. All right, now we get time, now we.
Mrs. DeRosa.
I have no, I know you're waiting.
No, no.
I'm one sugar, I'm sorry. I have no, I have no.
This is Ron. This is Karis. This is Esther Howard.
I have a quick question. On the calendar, I don't see the next work session. Do we not have a work session next month?
It'll be the Tuesday, the 8th, Tuesday, September 8th.
Cause the Labor Day weekend.
Okay, thank you very much. I have nothing else, thank you.
Mr. Bradley?
Nothing for me.
This is a time in the agenda where we will welcome comments from the public. Please come to the front, give your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
I'm a little silly, but I am.
Ma'am, your name and address?
I am Robert Deborah Byram, I'm at 869 Fairways Drive in the Fairways. And I just wanted to introduce myself. I've lived in Oakmont now just for a year and a half. And I, I think first and foremost, I'm the Fairways Council, and I wanted to introduce myself in a friendly, low-key, I'm here kind of way. They just asked me to be the liaison, and I believe in friendly relations as we do, so. I just wanted to say hello.
Hello, can you spell your last name, please?
K as in boy, Y, R as in red, U, M as in Mary.
Got it, thank you.
And you heard the address, okay?
I got that part.
869.
Yep, couldn't read the lips. Thanks, Nancy.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Powers made the motion, Ms. Wright, second is, all those in favor? Hi, we are adjourned to executive session. Thank you, good evening.
Good night, Bianca.
Good night, thank you.